Okay, so we now call this meeting to order. If we could please pay attention to Councilman Valdivia for the invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, ma'am. This evening, I'd like to welcome and thank Captain Christian Lopez for being here to give us our invocation. Captain Lopez and his wife Brooke moved to Topeka last summer from Muscatine, Iowa. They have been pastors with the Salvation Army for 11 years and I believe have been at the Topeka Sedado for about nine months. I've gotten to know Captain Lopez very well. I find him a very engaging and likable person. Captain Lopez is originally from Mexico and Brooke is originally from Albert Lea, Minnesota. Captain Lopez is the first Hispanic officer in Topeka and the team at the Salvation Army is thrilled to have him. Captain Lopez has also been working with myself and Kansas Representative John Alcala and his wife Christina Valdivia-Alcala. I'm working to bring a youth boxing program to Topeka via the Salvation Army, the Topeka Police Department, and the Topeka Fire Department. We're looking forward to that time when we can move forward with that program. So please, Captain Lopez, if you'll give us our invocation.
Yes, let's pray. Holy Father, we thank you so much for, because you've been good in these hard times, Lord. So I pray right now in the name of Jesus, Lord, that He die on the cross and then Rosa came. I pray, Lord, that you reign in Topeka your blessings, Lord. I pray that your Holy Spirit touch, you know, the police officers, the doctors, and the fire departments that are through with this and here in Topeka, Lord. I pray that you touch them in a mighty way, that you cover them with your holy hands, Lord. And I pray for guidance, Lord. I pray that, I believe that you guide the Israelites. I believe that you guide Moses, Lord. I believe that you guide Joshua, Lord. So I pray, Lord, that today you guide the authorities and the people that you put in charge here in Topeka, Lord, that way we can move forward according to your will. I believe that you see the future, Lord. So please, you know, we come to you praying that you will guide us and you will protect us. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Taylor, if you can direct the view to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move on to the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Council members Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia-Alcala?
Here.
Ortiz? Ms. Ortiz?
She's here, she's muted.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We now proceed to the consent agenda. Could the clerk read?
A are minutes of the regular meeting of April 7, 2020, and there are three open after-midnight applications that staff is recommending approval. Buffalo Wild Wings located at 1227 Southwest Wanamaker Road, Midwest Elks Lodging, number 1441, located at 1316 Southeast Madison Street, and the Booby Trap Bar located at 1417 Southwest Sixth Avenue.
We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Please raise your hand so that I can recognize you. Councilman Dobler makes a motion, seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. Are there any discussions on this item? Seeing no discussion on this item, we vote by roll.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Council members Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia-Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, we move on to the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, adopting the recodification of the ordinances of the city of Topeka, Kansas, also known as the Topeka Municipal Code, percent 2 KSA 123014 and 12-3015.
City manager.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, we ask you to consider approval of a recodification ordinance. This entails taking a look at the, and approving the various changes that are made within our code to fix obsolete provisions, duplications, and inconsistencies within the ordinance and statutes, the methodology, and arriving at the changes to be made to the legislations. And then this allows us to move forward with basically making a lot of minor changes throughout the code.
Thank you, mayor. I just need to clarify, the first action item, number A, is this being run so that B can be put into motion as well, or is, or are there other recodifications that are part of this initial ordinance that we're looking at right now?
A is a separate item. It does not relate to B or C. It is the list of change, it's basically the minor changes that are made throughout the code.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Ortiz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Nager. Additional comments or discussions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Council members Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia-Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout concerning compensation of the mayor and council members amending City of Topeka Code Section 215010.
City manager.
Thank you, mayor. This ordinance is the one that changes the code allowing that the governing body can, by resolution, make changes to their salary for a designated period of time. And so this provides for that capability both now and in the future, should there be a desire to do so.
Comments or questions from the body? Councilwoman Valdivia-Alcala.
Thank you, mayor. At this point, I would like to say before we go any further with this that I am moving to table the resolution, reduce mayor and council member compensation by 3%. And I want to explain the reasons why. Over the past week, I've realized that there are too many pieces missing, and I believe I need, and perhaps some council people believe it also, I'm not sure that we need more information. And because of this, I want to table this resolution, and I'm requesting the following: detailed utilities budget and parking fund budget with reduction scenarios, not including pay cuts. Number two, much-needed council discussion with city manager and whoever else might be wanted in that discussion with the council on how far down we can take the reserves during this time of pandemic. In 2008, reserves were almost at $7 million. In 2018, we were a little bit over $21 million. So I believe strongly that we need to have discussion on that and not just piecemeal information. Number three, to have time to review the responses of the eight unions currently being pressed into a 3% pay cut. Number four, to verify if there are any 2020 CIP projects that can be delayed or rescheduled to help in cost savings. Once we get all the missing pieces and can review in a proactive, team-centered, and employee-committed place, then perhaps we'll find not only was it too soon and reactive to expect cuts from our vital first responders, from other union workers, but also perhaps we will find pay cuts for all city workers will not be needed. For transparency to those watching, understand, I believe that I, and I don't know if anyone else believes, we were given incomplete information. When I realized this, my decision to pull back and table the resolution was a way to stem my own reactivity. So now with this tabling, I'm requesting a slowdown by city manager and more thorough discussions with the governing body. So moved.
We currently have a motion by Councilwoman Valdivia to table this. Is there a second to this motion? This motion dies for a lack of a second. Councilwoman Ortiz, did you second that?
Yeah, I'll second it for sake of discussion.
Wonderful. So we have a second for discussion. Do we have additional comments? And let us remember that this ordinance at this point in time is solely based on the compensation of the mayor and council members. What is a discussion that the body has at this point in time? And the current motion that we're discussing is tabling this to get more information. Councilwoman Ortiz.
I just want to make sure, I don't know if this is for the city manager, are we all getting the same information?
City manager.
Yes, ma'am. We've each presented you the budget information. Each council member and the mayor have received a presentation from finance staff and a memo that was sent to me and then forwarded to you to review regarding the budget information that we're basing the decisions related to budget cuts, use of reserves, and also the recommendation related to the reduction in salaries.
Okay, so this only relates to the mayor and the council, correct?
Correct.
So if this passes, it will still, is that on contingency if we need it? Or if we do, all city employees?
Well...
City manager.
This deals with the mayor and city council salary parts. I've been having conversations and emails with other governing body members regarding the other decisions related to staff, and I'm evaluating those as they come in for potential changes to the position related to the decision when to initiate a salary reduction.
Well, I don't know how my other colleagues feel about this, but I'm gonna tell you, I've spent most of my time on the phone this week because, and I was glad to see this was on the agenda, because we've been hammered about how everybody is not gonna take a cut and how we, as leaders, are not gonna lead in taking this cut. So I don't, I don't have a problem with voting on it now because I have asked a lot of people to tune in so they could see that we would be leading and we would be willing. Even though 3% of mine, my pay is only $600, I understand there's other people that'll take a harder hit, but I wanted it to send the message loud and clear that we're all in this together, not just the first responders, not just the police department, but it's my understanding that from the top to the bottom is taking the hit. Am I correct?
Yes. I'd be taking a 6% reduction and all other city employees would be taking a 3% reduction as far as non-union. We're still in the process of listening to the unions and getting their responses before any decisions are made related to the unions.
Okay, Councilwoman Ortiz, are you, do you still have more comments? I didn't want to cut you off. Pardon me.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have several council members in wait. We have Councilwoman Valdivia-Alcala to be followed by Councilman Lesser, to be followed by Councilwoman Nager. Councilwoman Valdivia-Alcala.
Thank you, mayor. What I mean by incomplete information is the list that I read off. We have eight unions whose response is due tomorrow, so we don't know what those responses are gonna be. Even though there was the hard press from what I have heard from a number of sources in that meeting, this is still considered up for decision by eight unions. And that is over probably 700 to 800 employees of the 1,196 employees. So we don't have a full picture. We were not provided at this time with the utilities fund breakdown on scenarios for reductions nor for parking. We were just given a base figure with no number crunching apparatus that we could look at. So that is incomplete information. I was not aware until right before this meeting started that the city manager was opting for 6%. How was that found out? That is incomplete information. This has been an array of incomplete information, not only for our first responders, but transparency for council members and transparency for the citizens of Topeka. And I just want to say, and this is my remiss if I missed this, I just need to clarify this. I just happened to notice as I was looking at the ordinance and the changing of everything, am I to understand that the budgetary impact for this is $18,055.40 between these two ordinance changes? Can I, can I get clarification on that?
Hold on. I have it. Oh, here it is. Oh, excuse me, I put it underneath the other one. The impact, instead of, yes, it would be with what we looked at, it's $38,578. That's the last number that I had, would be the savings related to...
I think, it's $4,000.
$4,000, okay. I was looking at the right spot.
$39.11.
Thank you.
What is it, what are we looking at, just for my clarification, city manager, with codification services? What does that entail?
I couldn't understand you. Say that again, please.
Codification?
Oh, Councilmember Valdivia-Alcala, I think you're looking at item A, which is the recodification ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So we're on item B.
Okay.
And that's actually an ordinance that amends the Topeka Municipal Code to allow the governing body the ability to reduce their salary if they wish for an established period of time. So this ordinance, item B, doesn't talk about percentages. But then item C is the actual resolution that talks about the percentages, and the overall savings would be $39.11 for a 3% reduction appropriated from right through the end of the year.
So, and I obviously missed that part, the bottom line is, is that the tabling of this, I believe, is to get the additional information for a full picture. If it comes down to us eventually cutting our salaries or whatever, that's not the issue because I brought it up. But I believe that I was reactive in nature before I saw how all of this played out, and there was not complete information, I believe, and it's still outstanding there. And as I stated in several emails, we need to give this more time before we put this on the backs of workers, on our, on our frontline personnel, firefighters, police.
Yeah, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to make sure that we keep it to the item at task, which is only at this point in time, the city council and the mayor. I think that there is a desire for further discussion, and we can absolutely go and talk about this as another item, but I want to make sure that we keep it, keep the discussion to this specific item.
Well, and I, I absolutely agree, mayor. I'm just saying, when it was saying that there was complete information given, my counter to that is that there was not. So thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next was Councilwoman Nager.
I think it was actually Councilman Lesser.
I'm sorry, Lesser. You ready?
I, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Nager. I, I have no issue with the additional information, you know, whatsoever. I just fail to understand what that has to do with what we're addressing right now in item B.
Now, Councilwoman Nager?
I'm kind of along those same lines. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having the option to make sure that we do have the flexibility in the future to change, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, our compensation structure, I think that would be responsible, especially in such a volatile time, to make sure that we have that flexibility. So I feel like the ordinance as it stands is something that would be prudent to go ahead and adopt at this time, no matter where we decide to go, how we decide to apply it.
Any, thank you. Anybody else that I missed that would like to make comment? Councilman Padilla, you're on mute, remember? On mute.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. Keeping to the topic that is at hand, what we're asking right now is to approve a reduction in the salary of just the mayor and council, no one else. If this doesn't trail off into the other items that Councilwoman Valdivia-Alcala has brought up, I believe that's a separate discussion. I do not have an issue with us as leaders taking the first step to show our willingness to do our part as well. But like everything else, if it's done for the right reason and there's informations to support, then it would be helpful. And I think acting on it now would be appropriate, but I do not want this to get into a discussion about the other issues at hand with the eight unions and so forth. For me, this is about us right now, and I want to keep it to that topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, mayor. I'm along the same lines. I believe we're presented an opportunity tonight to show leadership in this community in a fairly devastating time. I'm willing to take that move tonight. I understand the other issues which need to be thoroughly discussed, embedded, and we do need a lot more information. But the simple fact is, we're voting on cutting our own salaries tonight, and I am in favor of that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller? You're on mute, Councilwoman Hiller. Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to chime in that this language should be in our ordinance. I wasn't sure whether the idea was temporarily or long-term, but I think long-term makes sense, and I too support us taking leadership at this very difficult time when we get to the next item as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Duncan?
So just, I guess, a point of order or clarification. At this point in front of us is a motion to table item B only, or B and C essentially?
B.
So that's what's in front of us. And then after that, our vote would first be whether to change the current language, and then there will be a second vote on the actual action itself of a percentage or a reduction or change, correct?
Correct. This is only to allow us the flexibility and the ordinance is to change our salary. This current discussion and the request and the, what we're discussing right now is for that discussion to be tabled. That is the motion that is on the table right now.
Just want to clarify where we're at, so we all know where we're, what we're voting on.
Yes, sir. I was gonna clarify that, but thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Valdivia-Alcala.
Withdrawal of the motion.
Thank you very much. That motion has been withdrawn. Does the second agree? Councilwoman Ortiz, are you okay with the withdrawal since you seconded?
Sure.
All right. So then, at this point in time, what we have back at the table is a discussion about an ordinance that would allow the body to change the salary of the council. We've had some discussion with regards to this topic at this point in time for item B in the agenda to allow the staff the opportunity to change the salary for the governing body. Is there additional discussion? And if there is not discussion, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Padilla?
I would move to approve.
Councilwoman Padilla approves, seconded by Councilwoman Hiller. Additional discussion on this item?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Ortiz?
I thought Christina moved to table it. I thought that was a motion.
No, Councilwoman, that's why I asked you if you're okay with the second to the withdrawal because she withdrew that motion to table it.
Okay.
That's why I asked if you were okay with...
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. It's okay. All right. So we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have additional discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, we proceed by voting through the roll call.
Okay, and as a reminder, the mayor does not vote on this item. So council members Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia-Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted, voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item C, if the clerk agrees.
C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Christina Valdivia-Alcala reducing the salaries of the mayor and council members.
City manager.
Thank you, mayor. As stated, this is the actual resolution that sets the reduction in salary for the mayor and the council. As it's written, it is a 3% reduction as it's currently written in the, in the resolution.
Councilwoman Valdivia-Alcala, as the sponsor, would you like to make some comments?
Only comments are a motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval? Do we have a second? We have a second. Okay, we have a second. So sorry, we have the motion and a second.
Did the bond cover me?
Go vote. So do we have any comments?
Yep. Deputy Mayor, sir, would you like to...
Oh, there's the mayor. Thank goodness the mayor's back.
I am so sorry for that one. Pleasure's of working at home and having a dog that feels like he's gotta defend you. So now we have a motion and a second on this item. Any discussion on this item? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank my colleagues for moving forward with everything that's happening, misinformation that's out there. I think it's very important that citizens see that we're willing to stand up and to move forward with our 3%, even though some people consider it as peanuts. I would like my peanuts back if anybody is willing to give them back, but I just think that's important as leaders that we move, move forward, and this is the first time we've done this, so I just want to thank you.
Additional comments on this item? Councilman Duncan, to be followed by the deputy mayor.
I'm gonna vote yes on this. I think anytime you're going to ask your employees to do something, it's unconscionable not to do the same and take the lead on that. And we want to watch where we go at some point. This is obviously connected to a second proposal, and I want to make it very clear that my voting on this is not an acceptance or approval on the proposal for the overall proposed reduction to our city employees. I've made that clear publicly, I've made that clear privately, that I'm not... But I just think that's important as leaders that we move forward. And this is the first time we've done this, so I just want to thank you.
Additional comments on this item? Councilman Duncan, to be followed by the deputy mayor.
Uh, I'm going to vote yes on this. I think anytime you're going to ask your employees to do something, it's unconscionable not to do the same and take the lead on that. And what, uh, we want to watch where we go at some point. This is obviously connected to a second proposal. And I want to make it very clear that my voting on this is not an acceptance or approval on the proposal for the overall proposed reduction to our city employees. I've made that clear publicly. I've made that clear privately, that I'm not there yet and don't think we need to do that yet. So, I want to be clear that I'm doing this because that's a path that we end up going down. I want everyone to know that we're lockstep there, but it is not at all an acceptance of the overall proposal being presented to our employees at this time.
Thank you. Uh, next was Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I'm glad I'm not within, uh, reaching distance of any of you guys for bringing this up. But, um, you know, Ma- Mayor, I recently learned, and actually, this was yesterday, and I, um, and I, I'm sorry, I should have, uh, should have tried to get the information out to everyone earlier. Uh, you didn't find out yesterday that our city manager has taken the lead and voluntarily reduced his salary by 6%. And I'll tell you, I just, uh, I, I guess in my heart, I really feel like that's the right thing for us to do as well, follow his lead. And I, Mayor, you're the only one, honestly, I, I hate to reduce your salary by that just because you, you are now working about, you know, I think 30 hours a day on this. So, uh, that part I don't want to do, but, uh, but nevertheless, I guess this is all one governing body resolution. I guess I'd like to make that a formal motion that, that we, we affect a change of 6% instead of 3%. And again, Mayor, I don't want to speak for you at all. I, I am fine with your reduction at the 3%, but I would move that in Section 2, that we go, instead of going down to 19.4, that we go down to 18.8, which would be a 6% reduction in our, sorry, I'd like to make that motion.
Deputy Mayor?
Do we have a second?
Deputy Mayor?
And just, just so that everybody understands, would you like to make this as a friendly amendment to the motion at hand?
Yes.
Uh, yes, yes, absolutely. I totally support it. And I really appreciate, uh, Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala for bringing this up. I think this is fantastic. I just, I just think us and the city manager need to be in parity on this as a leader of the community.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, this was your motion.
Yeah. Can I not accept the friendly amendment and just have it work on its own?
Um, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely. Um, do we have a second to Councilman Emerson's motion? We have a second by Councilwoman Nager. Okay, so before we go any further in the discussion, since Deputy Mayor discussed me and my salary, I will say that I would be happy to take a 6% cut to my salary. Yes, I see legal trying to flag us.
Mayor, um, there was a, there was a motion and a second. So, you all have to vote on that to dispose of it? If there's no friendly amendment?
So, since if we dispose of that proposal for 3%, does that table it? And because my concern is that if we vote negative on that, that we can't bring it back for six months. So-
Yeah, that is correct.
So, that's why I'm saying that it would be best if we have a friendly amendment.
The motion would need to be withdrawn.
If it's going to make it easier, then go ahead. Friendly amendment accepted.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment accepted. Um, does our second still provide their second, which was, uh, I think, Councilwoman Nager?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have the, uh, an amendment that the vote is a 6% salary reduction for the council members and the mayor. And what I would like to say is, um, I would like to echo, and I think that it's been very clear, I have been very silent on purpose with regards to how I've been working on this issue. But I have made it clear to the team that I do believe that we should have further conversations. I am not in support of us reducing the salaries of our first responders and our staff. And I've been trying to work with city manager on additional alternatives that would include the staff working with us to provide us alternatives. Um, I have spoken to two councilmembers, uh, last week and tried to gauge where the appetite was for the body to make those reductions on our staff. And I would be happy to report that the individuals that I have had the pleasure of speaking to, which was only two individuals in this body, have expressed the same concern that I have of doing salary cuts. I think that a, a team approach would be something that I would love for us to work on. However, that being said, even though I don't want to cut the salaries on our first responders, and I don't want to, I want to explore everything that we can, I will be happy to do our part and provide a 6% reduction in my salary. So, um, at this point in time, anybody else that has any comments? Councilman Dobler.
Yeah, I, I would just quickly like to echo the sentiments of everybody else. Uh, I believe on the council, I appreciate Councilman Emerson bringing up the additional cut. I think, again, that shows a lot of leadership. Uh, I too am opposed at this point in time to, uh, just across-the-board cuts. And I want, you know, the, the first responders are police and fire. I'd also like to, uh, mention folks that are out there on the front line for the city of Topeka that don't get mentioned a lot, and that's our utility workers, uh, the folks that are keeping the water flowing, uh, keeping the streets clear and fixed, repaired. So, just a little bit of a shout-out to them, and I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
I'm glad, I thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you had those discussions and to hear, uh, that you're on board for continued dialogue because I, I wasn't sure where you stood on it. And, um, I also affirm with, when it was first posed to us about the pay cut, you know, I went into it because I believed it was a shared sacrifice. And again, if the things that I'm asking can be presented in that dialogue, I'm down for the three, down for the six, because we should be the example. It's unfortunate that we have to, or that I felt that there needed to be ways to get the information that we need to pull back on something and make this meeting go longer than it had to go. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Padilla. You're muted, Councilwoman Padilla. You need to unmute.
Oh, okay. Comment in that, you know, since this has come out and I've had a lot of discussions, uh, and I made it clear in a meeting that, uh, with the city manager, that from the very beginning of this, uh, situation, and we started to look at these issues and how we were going to problem solve, I offered my assistance firsthand, and I know that my colleagues would share that offer. Because I really honestly believe, Mayor, when you say team, team has to take on more than just a group of people. We've got to work together. We've got to meet together. Uh, getting information after the fact isn't part of the team. You come out of the huddle, you better know where you're going. And you have to have that information in advance. So, I offer that again, and I'm sure that my fellow councilmembers will agree, that being a team means that we're in on this as we talk through these options and all the possibilities that we may look at down the road before we come to a final decision. And, and that means working closely with the city manager and staff. I don't see that work being done in a, uh, in a vacuum, separate from the governing body. So, I, I offer, make that offer again and stand ready to help whenever I can.
Thank you, Councilman Padilla. Additional comments on this item? Uh, Councilwoman Heller. You're on-
Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate all the comments that have come before, in particular, the fact that we're a team. I, I have felt strongly since Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala suggested it that we should all jump in and that we should be leaders, absolutely. When we look at other companies in town, they're doing that. Even them aside, if we are approaching this challenge as a team, we need to do that. And that does include all of us and the city manager and the staff. Um, I also, we were partway through the capital improvement budget conversations before we got to this point. And I want to challenge all of us as a team, us, city manager, and all the staff, that we need to be looking at this crisis that we're in right now, and we need to be looking at next year together because we're all a little uncertain about where, where this is going on the short, immediate short term and into next year too. And, um, I think what I've heard from everyone is the desire to figure out how to protect our staff and our programs in the community. And that's hard to do if you don't have money. If we can figure it out, we, they have to work together. And I appreciate station has been opened up because it's going to be a challenge. And I appreciate, um, on the part of the staff and the unions that are considering joining this, you know, what, what their thoughts were. They are, they're tremendous team members who I appreciate a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and just as a point of clarification, um, the, the salaries in this resolution we're considering are actually stated as a, as a number. So, if, if I could just, just to clarify with you, um, if you want to include the mayor's salary in this, which, again, I'll probably be honest, I'm not necessarily in favor of that, but I'll, I would support that. But, uh, you'd be going from $40,000 minus 6%, should be $24, we'd go on to $37,600 under Section 1, and then we would be going to, I think, $18,400, if I'm not mistaken, minus 6%. $18,800. Is that, is that correct?
Deputy Mayor, in, uh, line 23, it'd be a prorated amount, actually, that would go from whatever the pay period made second through the pay period in December. So, for the mayor, it'd be $38,578 in line 23. And for, for 6%, and for the city council in line 26, it would change to $19,289 prorated, I think's what I have. But we'd have to insert the prorated figure.
Sure. Um, I, but these are stating him as a full-year salary, uh, Mrs. Robertson. So, can we, can we do that?
You, you can do that, and we'll just, it will be prorated. So, yeah. And you are correct in those other numbers then.
Okay, I just, I just want to make, make sure everyone's clear about that.
Yep.
Councilwoman Heller.
I was concerned that the figures were annualized.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I got it. I was just concerned that the figures in the ordinance were annualized, and they should stay that way. So, it was, it was covered.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
I just want to make sure that the record reflects that the 6% pertains to the mayor and the council members. It does not pertain to anybody else. And, and that just needs, I just wanted to reiterate that because I can see and hear the calls that just because you guys took a 6%, you guys are looking for us to take a 6%. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's very, very clear.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I think that the, the team has reiterated that even though we are having this action, there is not an appetite of anybody pretty much in this body that would like to see a reduction on our staff. So, we want to keep working on this one. But thank you for reiterating that. Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also just wanted to say thank you to the citizens who made their opinion heard. Um, it was not a complete story that was presented because we are still looking at different options. And I know the city manager's office is still looking at different options. But thank you for coming to us with your concerns instead of just grumbling in the streets, because this is why we're having this conversation. Because people, not only because it's something that we still want to look into, but specifically, we wanted to have this in a public sphere. So, you all know, we, we hear you and we take it seriously. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point in time, we have a motion on the table, which is a 6% reduction for the salary of the mayor and the city council. We've had discussion on this item. If there is no other discussion, and I don't see any hands raising, we proceed by voting by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Hadia?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, uh, the clerk will recognize the public comments that were received.
Yes, we had, um, several emails that I sent the governing body over the last two days that will be included in the minutes. Would you like me to read their names? Is that what you're wanting me to do, or?
Um, sure.
Okay. All right. The first one we received was from Ron Solcom. Next one is Elisa Works. Uh, from George Peterson, Clark, Clark Trammell, Jerry Reese. Uh, let's see, this one's from Daryl Foster and Joseph Ledbetter. Not complete.
At this point, thank you very much. At this point in time, we'll move into the announcements. Uh, city clerk?
Actually, I have the, uh, next, the next week, we do not have a meeting. The next meeting is May 5th. On that agenda, tentatively, we have placed a report from Policy and Finance Committee related to the meeting locations change that they were looking at. They've been unable to meet, but their report date is coming up on the 5th, and so they'll be able to do a short report on the work they've done so far. Also, we will have a final plat for the Green Hills Point subdivision, um, a real estate purchase agreement with BRB contractors for a small piece of land. We will also continue discussion and get back to, uh, making a decision whether to continue to spin the rules to have remote committee, to have remote meetings. And also, we'll be looking at, uh, continuing discussion on the CIP. As far as announcements that I have, I have a couple. Uh, Topeka Collegiate has selected the Topeka Zoo as a recipient of the Collegiate Cares COVID-19 Grant. The $1,500 grant award will be used to offset and continue grade-level-appropriate kindergarten through grade 5 virtual classes that the zoo has been offering. These grants are available thanks to the generosity of the Kokari Foundation. The education classes can be viewed Monday through Friday at 10:00 a.m. through the Topeka Zoo's Facebook page. Also, seven firefighter recruits started the academy on Monday morning. And the Topeka Shawnee County Public Library has started offering free Wi-Fi services near Fire Station Number 2 from 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Don't have any?
Thank you, city manager. At this point in time, I just want to thank the Incident Command Team and thank all the churches that have stepped up, uh, including the Salvation Army to help feed our kids in our community. It's been, uh, a delight to watch everybody come together. We have macroboys that just stepped up, and in Fellowship Bible Church, for free, installed, uh, three outlets so that Fellowship could have all the fridges that they need in order for them to store the food. Um, it, it's, it's amazing to go down to the basement of Fellowship. Um, I think that the schools are going to start retaking back the, the lunch, uh, process pretty soon. But still, throughout this process, the churches have been amazing to work with. Um, there was a lot of tension for Easter. Our community has an amazing group of both Catholic leaders and, uh, Christian leaders overall, who decided to just support, uh, the decisions made at the county level with regards to the, the decisions of, of being safer at home. And I want to thank everybody again publicly for doing that. Um, and the other big thing that we've been dealing with right now is there's a lot of unrest in our community. There's a lot of individuals that feel that it's time for us to open up the economy and for us to get going again. Um, and, and there is a cognitive dissonance with regards to what this virus really means. And I want to make sure that everybody in our community understands that this virus is extremely deadly and that the fact that we have been extremely fortunate and blessed that Topeka has only suffered five deaths, which are five catastrophic deaths. There are five too many. Um, and that we have 91 or 93 people, uh, as of today, that have tested positive. It is only because we took these measures early. Um, but there is a reality of this virus that we have been spared from because all of you at home have been working with us. Now, I also want to talk about the fact that we have also started talking about recovery and how we want to start bringing people back to work because we understand that people are struggling. There's, there's food insecurity- There's, there's food insecurity, there's challenges on people getting benefits. Today, the Senate approved another package, and we're still advocating for cities to receive additional funding with our federal delegation. But the, the reality is that there's two realities that are very, you know, true. One of them is the fact that, yes, social distancing is the best cure for not having a significant outbreak in our community. But the other reality is, and it's absolutely true, that we have families and businesses that are significantly struggling, and we're trying to figure out a way of ensuring that people can get back to work in a safe manner. So I want to remind everybody that we're working on this recovery. Our task force had our first meeting yesterday at 3:00. It was a great discussion. Councilwoman Nager is a part of that task force, and Commissioner Mays is as well. That, those task forces are going to keep expanding. The initial group is going to start looking for members in those sections. So to the council members, I would recommend that you reach out to Michelle Stubblefield at the Greater Topeka Partnership, so that you can see from the framework which area would you like to be a part of. But there's, there's a lot of work that's to be done in our community, and we're going to get to this together. And, and we're talking recovery, but just have some patience with us, because we want to make sure that we do this right. And then the last thing that I'll say is, to all of you out there, I have been extremely cautious for obvious reasons of not speaking too much about my opinions with regards to the salaries. But I think that today, it was quite frankly open that city manager and I had discussions early on. I appreciate the fact the city manager did go back to the unions and tried to have a negotiation. By Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala indicated, we are pending potential solutions that these staff members are going to provide. And I appreciate the fact that our staff is having the opportunity to come back to us and give us some feedback, because I fully believe that our staff will come through, and that our staff will provide us some wonderful solutions in order for us to meet our goal. Because when they are given the opportunity, they rise up to the occasion. So thank you so much. At this point, we go to Councilwoman Padilla.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Nager? Sorry, I was on mute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like the mayor alluded to, we are in discussions to making sure that we are recovering as a community in every aspect that the COVID-19 pandemic has affected us and will continue to affect us. We've talked about how we want to make sure that we have immediate goals, kind of those intermediate goals, and then long-term goals, because we know that this is not going to be something that affects us for the next month or so. It's going to be something that affects us for a very long time, and we'll have repercussions for years, decades to come. If you are interested in getting involved, please reach out. And like I said before, thank you for being, getting in touch with us as your representatives to make sure that your interests are being heard and your concerns are being met. Thank you. And wash your hands.
Councilwoman Dobler?
I have nothing else, thank you.
Councilwoman Lesser?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Duncan?
No, I'm good.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Just wanted to shout out to Capitol Federal for putting together the Relief Center and Community Action for partnering with them on that. Been a wonderful, I think largely unexpected, tremendous help at this time. And also want to just shout out to the people who are laid off or whose hours have been cut, who, who are suffering. Also, the frontline workers that often get overlooked, the people who are keeping our seniors that are in those care homes and nursing facilities safe, and so far, healthy. The frontline workers at all the grocery stores and Quick Trips and, and the retailers that are still open, that are taking chances every day, serving all of us. And, and those who are taking care of children at home, the babies, as well as becoming self-styled schoolteachers when they never expected to be. We're all learning a lot, and people are contributing so much. And I want everyone to know that we appreciate that, too, and we're doing our best to, to cover your needs. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say, I just saw an article recently pop up before the meeting about the Tipsy Carrot in Noto Arts District having to close. I think, you know, it's, it's very sad, and I know that we're going to see more of this in the future. So, you know, for all those that are working hard to get this aligned, I think is, is really good. I understand that there's so much restlessness out there, that there is probably so much economic discontent that we don't even, if you could go into any family home, you know, how much it's impacting them. But like I try to tell my folks who are elders, just remember your mask. Always wear your mask, like Dr. Hannah says, wash your hands. And because if we get sick, if we get each other infected, and if we end up being one of those worst-case scenarios, we don't want to be alone in those hospital rooms. We don't want to have that kind of horror happen to any of our family members. And so I'm with the safer at home until however this extends out, and I'm going out with my mask everywhere. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would just like to say to the gentlemen who wore their suits tonight, you look awful nice on our Zoom meetings, unlike the deputy mayor who is probably sitting on his jacket. No, but on a serious note, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for the book, Corduroy. I did listen to it after, I listened to Michael Jordan, so I apologize, but I did listen to it. And I'll tune in Sunday to see what you are going to be reading. Again, thank you for thinking of the younger children that are stuck at home.
No worries. My pleasure. Deputy Mayor?
I simply don't have words after Ms. Ortiz, after her comments. So everyone, stay safe, and this will get over eventually.
At this point in time, I would like to call an executive session. If the city attorney can read the parameters?
The motion is recessed into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319B3. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Administrative and Financial Services Director Jessica Lamentola, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Senior Assistant City Attorney Katherine Walter, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
Taylor, let us know when we are able to suspend our transmission out to the public. And once that transmission is suspended and the room is vacated, let us know when it's safe for us to proceed. I will start the timer for the 20 minutes. So are we, are we open so that people could hear us make our motion?
Yes, I think. Are they, are they open?
Yes.
Yes, you are, Mayor.
Okay, so at this point in time, we do have to make a motion to recess into executive session. The city attorney read the parameters. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Councilwoman Nager? Do we have a second to go into executive session? We have a second by Deputy Mayor Emerson. At this point in time, if all of us would do through roll call our, our answer, our, our vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
I don't like it.
Yes.
Padilla?
You're muted.
You're muted, Mike.
Councilwoman Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes. Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Nine having voted yes, we go, we recede into recess into executive session to not exceed 20 minutes. Let us know when we're clear, so that we can have our discussion.
We have to log out and then log back in.
Taylor, do we need to log out? Okay, so we have not concluded our executive session, and we're coming out for an extension not to exceed 10 minutes. Do we have a second for the same parameters? We have a second by, we have a motion by the deputy mayor, and do we have a second by anybody else? Councilwoman Ortiz, seconds. All those in favor, since this is pretty visual, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. We reconvene in the same executive session under the same parameters, not to exceed 10 minutes.
Are we done, or are we?
We, we have to adjourn.
Oh, I was, you all believe the meeting, okay.
Okay, thank you. We have concluded the executive session. No action has been taken. At this point in time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for watching. See you next week.